I want to call to order the regular meeting of Litchfield City Council. Please stand, and we're going to ask Clayton Miller to lead us to the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to, we have some visitors. It's good to have everybody come out to city council meeting. We got to apologize, the last two meetings that were had were not televised the way we had intended for them to be. And so we had earlier decided that this would be the last Facebook broadcast, but since we had a couple glitches on some meetings, we're going to continue the Facebook until the first meeting of September, then we'll go all to YouTube. So please subscribe to your YouTube channel, that helps. And I think that we've got our issues worked out with our streaming services. We have a pretty short agenda, and we have already been in a meeting. We met at four o'clock with Kentucky League of Cities as we talked about the strategic planning. And there was a group of three came and took a lot of notes, and they're going to bring us back a report in the next few days, and a full report by the end of the month. And we appreciate them coming down here. You have attached to your agenda the minutes of the regular meeting of July 19th. I've asked, I hope you had a chance to look through those. If you see an addition or changes that you'd like to make, I wish you'd do so now. If you're not, entertain a motion to accept the minutes, the way Lori typed them out.
I'll make the motion.
Who's seconding it? Tootie Kotzal's seconding it? All in favor?
Yeah.
Also, we have attached to your agenda the bills we need to pay. And I've been depending on Billy Dallas to look over those. Billy, have you had a chance to look over them?
Yes, sir.
Did you see any questions, got any questions about them?
No, sir, it's cheap. Make a motion, we pay them quick.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion seconded, all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. We're down to visitors. We have Mr. Josh Emery, who is Grayson County Citizen of the Year. And well, good to have you here, Josh. Josh and I have been working on a plan to give shots at the fairgrounds during the fair, in the Tommy Glasscock Building at the end of the fairway. And so far, it looks like that's a goal, but it's subject to change, isn't it, Josh?
Yes, we are actually making sure that we have that exactly. And it looks like everything's going to be good again, so I just hear a long time calling and everything going that we don't have a problem with offering shots to the fair.
I hope that Grayson County lags behind in percentages of people that's had the COVID virus vaccine. Under the state, although we're ahead a lot of rural eastern Kentucky counties, we're still lagging behind. We're hoping that people will take advantage of the vaccine being given at the fair to take that, to take those. It's no cost to anyone. And as Josh is wearing his mask and I, we have some visitors wearing theirs, people that have not been vaccinated need to be. And we're on the verge of being shut down again. I don't know if the governor will call for that, but if he does, I will follow the governor's orders, what he says. And I hope it's not gotten that bad. But Josh, Grayson County's been plagued with an upsurge of positive tests, haven't they?
Yeah.
Why don't you come up to the microphone?
First time for everything, sorry about that. Yes, Mayor, to answer your question, we are currently seeing an increase of cases. We had a pretty quiet summer, which in healthcare, we know, we don't say that word, quiet. But we did. And unfortunately, with the spread of the Delta variant, it's looking like that we are having several more cases. Over the weekend itself, we had 50 cases in the county.
Are those all Delta variants?
Well, we really don't know, because, you know, the majority of testing that's done in this county is done rapid testing. There are still some places that do PCR.
I see.
The hospital may do PCR testing. We do rapid testing. So we only send off specimens to the state lab to be tested, and they have to go through a certain test routine to screen for those variants. So the state has said that they're estimating around 80 to 85% of positive cases in this state are now the Delta variant. So it's way more contagious. I was talking to William, Billy, just a minute ago, and he was asking about the increase, and I said, yeah, it seems like this variant is way more contagious. And we're, you know, when we had the other variants, if mom or dad in the household got COVID, a lot of the times, no one else in the house got it. But now we're seeing that the majority of the times, if mom and dad has it, or if the kid has it, it spreads through the household. So very, very, very contagious.
Well, I encourage people, what can we encourage people to do, Josh?
Well, right now is, the CDC actually came out with guidelines that if you're going to be in an area, and I didn't know how many people would be in here, this is not too crowded, but even if you are vaccinated, to wear a mask, only because the Delta variant is way more contagious. There are instances where people have been vaccinated and they still get the virus, but that should not stop anybody from getting the vaccine, because the majority of people who, if they have a breakthrough case, and that's what we call it, if they're vaccinated and they still get the virus, they don't end up in the hospital, or they, God forbid, you know, they don't die, which is a good thing. So those are things to keep in mind. So yes, wear your mask, you know, if you're going to be in crowded spaces, even if you're vaccinated at this time. Do those basic things of washing your hands, try to social distance. And there's so much misinformation. And right now, what we're trying to do at the Health Department is we're trying to say, if you have questions, please don't get your information purely from social media. If you don't want to talk to us at the Health Department, which you're more than welcome to, you know, reach out to us, I'll try to answer your questions. I don't know everything, I'm actually non-clinical. I have an MBA, but I do not have a, I'm not a medical doctor or a nurse, but I can get somebody who has an answer to that question. But at minimum, or actually probably even better, not at minimum, you should reach out to your medical provider and ask them, whether you call and talk to them, or you do a medical visit. So please, just get your information from good sources. And always, you know, we're vaccinating, we actually have another clinic Thursday at ECTC. It's nine to 11:00 a.m., and then one to three. You do not have to have an appointment, you can walk in. And at this time, we have all three vaccines. So we're actually in a position we haven't been in before because of the supply of the vaccine. So so many people in the county want Johnson &amp; Johnson, or someone may want Moderna, or someone may want Pfizer. We have all three, as long as the supply lasts. So we're going to continue to serve, and if you have any questions, like I said, just give us a call.
I read an article in the paper, and it suggests the same thing that you did tonight, to don't trust the rumors and Facebook for your medical advice. Seek your medical advice from a health professional.
Yes.
What percentage is Grayson County had vaccinated?
Well, we're at 40%. That's according to the Kentucky Department for Public Health. If you go to kycovid.ky.gov, they actually have a virtual map. You can click, if you go under vaccine, and then you can look at a map of the state of Kentucky. You can click Grayson County, and then it brings up all the demographics of the total population, breaks it down, how many vaccinated, how many people over the age of 18, how many below 18, how many above the age of 65 or so. Now, I will say that the 65 and older population in Grayson County is like 78% vaccinated, which is wonderful. 40% is also good, too. If you go around the map and you look at the other counties that surround us, not to pick on any county, but we, as far as rural counties, we're leading them. So we have a drive here for the vaccine. And as I go out in the community and I talk, and at one time, I actually thought this before, and it was a misconception of something I had, I thought we were now at vaccine refusal, and I told you that at one of our meetings, Councilman Emery. But I was wrong, because as we set up location tables here in the community, people still have questions. It's not necessarily refusal, like I thought. There are still questions out there. So we just have to get the information to people, be patient with people, get along with people, and meet them where they're at, and talk with them, and address their concerns. If you're willing to have those conversations, a lot of times, people will be reasonable most of the time. So again, Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., one to three, ECTC here in Litchfield. Walk in, you don't have to have an appointment, we'll get you taken care of.
And there's no cost to it at all?
There's never a cost for the COVID vaccine. That's also a misconception, Mayor. There's people who've reached out to us and said, well, I don't have insurance. No one, we don't bill for your vaccine, nor does the hospital or any of the facilities. The government has made the vaccine free. So if you can walk in without a dollar in your pocket and without insurance, we'll still get you vaccinated.
What is the statewide average, Josh? Do you know?
The last time I looked, it was a little bit over 50%, as far as fully vaccinated, I believe. Don't quote me on that, but I think that's what it was, was more 50%. And what's driving up the percentages is the urban, or the urban areas more so, Jefferson County, places like that, where for whatever reason, people are getting vaccinated more. But the vaccine is available here, so that's not the issue.
What age groups are you seeing now that's more vulnerable, 35 to 50 here?
Well, if you go by the actual signs and what other hospitals are seeing, I think here in Grayson County, we're just now seeing the tip of the damage that the Delta variant is doing. But our kids are way more vulnerable than they had been with the previous variants. And I'm going by the signs and the reports of what hospitals are experiencing in southern states, with a long amount of hospitalizations of kids. So, you know, when we first looked at this, we said, well, most vulnerable people would be people that have, you know, different health circumstances, health issues, or older individuals. But as the variants progress and evolve and change, I think we're all, at this point, vulnerable. So, does that answer your question?
What's the youngest age you can get vaccinated in?
Right now, it's 12 years old. And they can only get vaccinated with a particular vaccine, and that's the Pfizer vaccine. And we have that vaccine as well. So the questions we're getting now is, when will people under the age of 12? And I don't have that answer. If I would have been a gambling man, I would have guessed it would have been before school started back, but that didn't happen.
Do you think, do you think because the, you know, such a widespread right now, and it's going faster, that people are overconfident and not listening, or?
I think that with this, with the virus, and I want to be careful how I phrase this, I think that we've always had a reason to alarm our communities to COVID. However, this variant, to me, is a little bit more alarming because of the impact it has on kids. So I think, I don't want to say we cried wolf, we didn't mean to cry wolf, we were trying to keep people updated as much as possible, but I just think the virus now is more dangerous than it ever has been. And so, you know, people who've had it and they've recovered, or we were now, what, this started in March of 2020, and here we are in August of 2021, we're still dealing with it, and people are like, well, I'm still here, you know, or I've had it, or my neighbor had it, and they bounced back just fine. But I think that's to answer your question, I think that the time that we deal with this, and I think people just feel kind of strong toward it, and like it's not going to touch them or harm them. I think when you combine that with the misinformation that's out there, is why we still see a lot of hesitancy for people to get vaccinated.
Are you seeing a lot of repeat people that had it, and they're getting it again? Are those that are getting the shots later on having it?
Well, to answer your question about reinfection, so if somebody, you're asking me, is, you know, if somebody has had COVID, and what's the rate of them, of those people getting it again? It's below 50 at this point, as far as tracking. Now, that's the number of people we know that have tested positive.
Right.
But we know that there's been people in our community, and all over the state, and all over the country, that probably had this virus at some point, and may have not even known they had it, they were asymptomatic.
Right.
So as far as the data, below 50 of what we have. As far as the breakthrough cases, and I said, that's what we call cases, that when someone's been vaccinated and then they get the virus, it's below 50 as well.
Right, okay.
I don't have those specific numbers in front of me, it's very rare compared to the numbers we've seen of positive people, you know, which...
You got any other questions, Clayton? Moon, you got any questions?
What does Josh, you go to give it to the mayor?
At the fair, we, it just depends, I mean, when is the fair? August 20?
In the August, like last week.
I'm still fairly, I'm a transplant here to Grayson County, so I'm learning when you all do your office fair. Burke County, we have it in July, so it's a little different. So I don't think the supply will change much by the end of the month, so we would hope to be able to do all the vaccines. Now, in that type of crowd of people, it may be hard for, because they're coming to the fair once, and then to follow up with them again, to get them in for a second dose.
Yeah.
So we've looked at that, and we thought maybe the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, but with that, you know, you may have people who don't want the Johnson vaccine, Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, for whatever reason. So we hope to be able to offer options, but, you know, ideally, to be realistic, it would probably be better to try to do the Johnson &amp; Johnson for whoever's willing to take it.
It's easier to die.
One and done versus, you know, the two, and you're having to follow up with somebody 28, 30 days later, and they may not come back for their second shot.
Tootie, you got any questions, or Josh?
No, sir.
Jessica, do you?
I do, I just wanted, is there anything that we can do, the city can do, to help you, help the Health Department get information out, or just anything that you can think of that we can do to do our part?
Well, Grayson County today just became a red county, and people always ask me, you know, what does that mean? Well, the colors are determined by the state. And red basically means critical spread. And so we're at a critical, critical spread rate, which means it's all around us, okay? So there is a document on kycovid.ky.gov. I don't mean to keep throwing addresses out, and if you all need me to email this to you, I will as well. Jessica has my, or Councilman Emery has my email. But if you go on there, there's a document that has to do with counties that are specifically red. And it breaks it down, it's common sense stuff, but it's necessarily stuff we may not think about, but having a unified community message. So obviously, you guys, as councilmen and mayor, you guys have a platform to reach several people. You have people in the community that respect you. You know, I'm new to Grayson County, I'm glad to be living here, I love it over here, but I don't know a lot of people yet, you guys do. And I've learned a lot with this vaccine, doesn't come from necessarily what a doctor says, even though it's important to talk to your doctor, but it's what my neighbor says, or, you know, this person I've known for 40 years that I respect, you know, that I can, I can trust what they're telling me. I've noticed in Grayson County that that carries a lot of weight, so we're very communal.
Obviously, we're divided with 40%.
Huh? Yeah, that's true.
Obviously, the community's divided.
But are we having those difficult conversations? You know, I know that it's the elephant in the room, and if it's going to be a confrontation, you know, I understand, probably best not to bring it up. I have people in my family that, and I'm the public health director, that I can't mention it to. But if you can have those difficult conversations, if you can use your platform to voice, and to maybe reach out to those people who respect you and know you better than they know me or anybody at the Department.
Jessica, you got any more questions, or Josh? Billy, do you? Josh, you got any parting words?
No, I just want to say thank you so much for allowing me, I'm going to echo, for allowing me to come and speak to you guys, I really appreciate everything. It's been a difficult couple of years, and I respect this community very much so, and if you guys ever need anything, and I appreciate any help you can render to us.
I appreciate the job that you've done, Josh, and what a time to step into a job with this COVID virus. And I thank the community owed you a debt of gratitude for your hard work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, I couldn't do it without my staff, thank you.
Hey, Josh, I have a Facebook question real quick for you.
Yes.
Former Councilman Kelly Stevenson asked, are there booster shots coming?
Well, again, I'm a non-clinical person, so I'm just going to tell you what I think, based on what the variants we're seeing, as well as people who, you know, they're, how can I put this? I think in my own opinion, that we will see a booster shot at some point. But that's me being non-medical, and me seeing the variants and the spread that we're seeing, we're going to eventually have to beef up what we have. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I think a lot of your, some of your misconception, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but people that's had it think they've built antibodies up to where it's harder to get, or they can't, which really, given the shot or taking the vaccine, would help more, is what the things I've read through CDC and different places. So, in your opinion...
I mean, the best thing I can say to that is, you know, is to speak to the science, that it's always best, you know, talk to your provider, there is a limit, and some providers differ. I think me and Councilman Emery was talking about the days she works in the hospital, it's 90 days typically that a provider will work them in, but some providers may be a little different. But overall, the message from medical providers that I speak to is, it's best to get the vaccine. Wait a little bit, wait those 90 days, recover, bounce back, and then get the vaccine, because it works better than our body, you know, naturally can.
Josh, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you guys so much.
Okay, we have some other visitors. Jeremy, do you want to say anything?
No.
Terry, do you want to say anything?
No.
Karen?
No.
Ruby?
No.
Okay, we're down to unfinished business then. On top of unfinished business, business is strategic planning. We met about an hour and a half today with the Kentucky League of Cities, they brought down three people to meet with us, and they took a lot of notes, and Jessica, tell them what all we did.
So we just talked a little bit about what we saw as our major issues within the city as council members, and then our biggest strengths within the city. And so we spent almost two hours talking about just different things with Litchfield, ways we think we can grow, ways we think that we've prospered already, and KLC is going to take that information back and create some type of a strategic plan for us to work towards, so we can create goals and kind of work together in unity on maybe even like five, 10 years down the road on plans for Litchfield.
Anybody got questions about anything that was said? We're back to code enforcement, and Clayton gave me a name this weekend as somebody that might fill the third spot, and I told him I'd contact him today, but I've really been in meetings all day, haven't I, Lori? So I'll have to put that off, but we're looking for a third member. I think we got two, and an alternate, and we're looking for a third member. So if anybody knows, like I said, Clayton, give me a name, I'm going to search them out and find out, and let them understand that it does involve some continuing education courses and such stuff like that. We do have, we do have our code enforcement officer here, and our planning and zoning officer is Mr. Tyler Harold. He's given us all a package. Tyler, why don't you explain to us what you brought to us tonight?
Sorry to give you all some extra work, but these are some things that I've been dealing with over the past several months, and another reason why we need to get the board put in place, put together some packets. This is seven different properties within the city limits, and there's very many more than these seven, but these are all, in my opinion, properties that need to be condemned right away. Each packet shows pictures of the properties, and then there's a description of why my findings, basically, lack of maintenance is the biggest issue amongst all the vacant properties within the city. They become very dilapidated, they become hazardous, fire hazards, vermin, things like that. But when we proceed with this, I have not sent anything out to any of these property owners yet, because we have to, by law, provide them an avenue for appeal, and that is the Code Enforcement Board. So as soon as we can get that in place, we can send these out there, the property owners then have a certain amount of time to either fix the properties, tear the structures down, or they can appeal to the decision.
Why are we not using ordinances that are on books right now?
This is all for that ordinance.
We have ordinance right now on book.
Chapter 152, unsafe and unfit structures.
It has to be taken in court, and it gets held up in court, right? Isn't that right, Arlene?
There's several issues with the...
The final bill is...
There's several issues with the ordinance that's now on the books, there's not an appeals process, it's very vague, there's not a...
So do we need to do away with it?
Well, that's what we would be doing with the Code Enforcement Board.
Just on them certain ones?
On the unfit structures, it would be replaced.
So we have no basis right now to even use them?
Well, the issue is, you're going to have, you don't have an appeals process for what we have in place. So that's one reason I don't believe it's been utilized in the past, is that there's holes there in the process we have in place. Now, the nuisances that we have on the books, those aren't going to be changed. The only thing that's going to be changed on those is the penalty phase, how we talked about last meeting, where instead of there being all these different fines, it would all be consolidated.
So our ordinances, you have to have an appeals to it?
That's KRS, you have to have an appeals process. So basically, what we would be doing is wiping out the unfit structure ordinance that we have on the books now, and we would have one that would be replacing it.
One of the properties that's in this package that Tyler brought us, the Hart and Telling Task Force went to that for an issue.
There's two of them.
There's two of them. And I had, I had been texting with the former Attorney General, former federal attorney in Louisville, who's from Litchfield, and he texted me a KRS saying that people that own these properties stand in good light of being able to lose them. And I sent that to Earlene, and we're researching all these avenues to which to help clean up our community.
Right.
How's the demolition house business, Tyler?
We've had one complete, we've got another one in the works right now, or actually two in the works right now, and then I've also issued a fourth demolition permit, and I think a fifth one might be coming pretty soon.
Are you, the one on High Street, isn't it?
I've already issued that one, so they haven't started yet.
I drove by there, I seen they hadn't started yet.
And then I've had some, somebody come to me requesting the information.
What else can you tell us about these? I see there's some properties on here, the one on Hilltop. Earlene, if I just read out these addresses, would I, would I be threatened to be sent to court or anything?
I would not do that without giving the homeowner notice, and that's something that's not...
Okay, I'm not going to name their names, just a property address. But anyway, there's a number of properties in there, I'm glad that you're cited and going after. There's a, it's a real eyesore. Go ahead, Tyler.
But if anybody wants to do any research on our online ordinances, if you look at chapter 152, that involves the unsafe and unfit structures, and then KRS, chapter 99.700 to 99.730, that also speaks of dilapidated properties and the process that we have to take in order to get them taken care of.
Okay.
Hey, Tyler, will you quickly go over that demolition program and how it works? I've had several people ask me about it, so I thought there might be other people that just give everybody an idea.
Okay, so any residential property, okay, nothing commercial, it has to be residential properties within the city limits. If it is a structure that they are wishing to tear down and demolish, they can come fill out an application, I'll do a site evaluation, and then sign off on it, it's a $50 fee. They dump all debris from the site at zero cost. And then when they're done, they have three months in order to do, to get this done. When they're finished, then I have to go back and reevaluate the site and make sure that it's left in fair condition, and then basically, it's got to be able to be mowed. You can't just leave something and mow it.
Tear down the house and leave it to dust.
You've got to take it down. We did have the first one that was done on Mill Street, we allowed them to leave the basement because she presented plans for what she was going to do, she was going to utilize the existing foundation. She was gonna utilize the existing foundation to rebuild, so we allowed that to happen, but usually it's, it's gotta be taken completely down, but it would be a case-by-case basis.
I intend to ask the council next year, next calendar year, to include mobile homes or just do mobile homes only for about a hundred and fifty dollar fee and there's a lot of mobile homes in Litchfield that ought to be at the transfer station and maybe it'll give the owners an opportunity to get rid of those.
And I think we are coming close to the end of that program. I think it goes through the end of October.
I was thinking we went through December thirty-one.
I thought it was from October to October, but.
I don't remember. You may be right.
But I'll.
We'll investigate that, but people take advantage of that. People that's reading this, looking at us on Facebook or, or YouTube, take advantage of that. Go to, talk to Tyler and get this lined out. It's a good program. Billy, you got any questions to Tyler?
No.
Jessica?
No.
Tootie?
No, sir.
Clayton?
No.
Tyler, thank you very much for the work you've done at the pool. I know you had your hands for this year at the pool and doing this other as well and maybe after the pool closes, you can devote more time to your planning zoning work and the, and the abandoned houses. Thank you very much.
Mayor, before Tyler said, Tyler and I met last week, there was one thing, you know, like I'd said before, I, I don't see a need for us to change the nuisance ordinances except for the penalty stage when the Code Enforcement Board is in effect, but one thing that Tyler had mentioned to me and something that's in our nuisance ordinances right now, the length of grass is twelve inches right now. Tyler had, had said that he, he sees that a lot of people start making calls at what, like eight, nine inches.
So, I'm even less than that, but, but, I mean, twelve inches is pretty tall and I mean, we've been out there, it's like three feet and higher.
Yeah.
But we are getting phone calls and complaints on it before it even gets to the, the twelve inch level, which is in our ordinance.
I see. And you want to lower that then?
I would like to see us amend that and then make a couple of other changes as well.
Well, let's, when we draw this, when we adopt this new ordinance, so let's do that. I noticed there are some properties that's along the main drag, that's near the ambulance service, that they've done better by keeping it up and it just helps, Tyler. It makes the community look better and I'm, I'm tickled to death to go along whatever you suggest and I think the council would as well. We want our neighbors to take care of their property and if you could pass the ordinance to give somebody a, a conscience, we could pass that, but you can't and a lot of people, every neighborhood's got it, every neighborhood's got it. I noticed one in here in the Cane Mill Heights area, it's a disgrace, but I, I appreciate the work that you're doing. Thank you.
And Mayor, just to talk about timeline, I know last meeting we had said, once that third member is secured, that's when we'll go ahead and do first reading and have that scheduled. Is that still the schedule the council and wants to keep?
Sooner the better. We're, we're two years into this really, not by your fault or anybody's fault, but I'm gonna come up with another member between now and then. Like I said, Clayton's gave me a name, I'm gonna talk to them and secure a third member and if anybody knows, I'd say, it's not gonna be a job to which you'll be richly rewarded because if somebody comes to before that board that's frustrated that Tyler wants them to clean up the property, it won't be very pretty and that's the reason the council members and the mayor don't ever attend those meetings because we're, we don't want to get in that mess, but we're fine, we're gonna find somebody else and to do that. Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
Dumpsters.
And, and your honor, your honor, how is it? Mayor, thinking I'm in court, that goes along with the lines of the, the Code Enforcement Board, basically, and, and just planned that first and second reading, they're gonna be long meetings. I'm gonna have to have a lot of cough drops and, and water to, to redo all that readings.
Okay. Thank you, thank Earlene.
I'll give you the business over.
Let's go to, Moon, you got anything you want to bring before the council?
I'm sure.
Are you sure?
I'm sure.
Clayton Miller?
Wesley. Last time Heather, the same thing with Scotty over there. Has anybody been back over there?
We have and actually Scotty's, Scotty's contracting and is giving me a price on what it'll take to fix that. And when I talked to Chris Smith with Scotty's last week, he's supposed to be getting it to me this week, I hope. So, once I get some numbers, we can see what it's gonna take and we can kind of decide.
Talk about it.
Okay. What plan we need.
You got anything else, Clayton?
No, that's all.
Tootie Cochran?
No, sir.
You sure?
I'm sure.
Jessica?
I do have a question since people have asked me about, do you, has there been a decision made on if we're gonna do fall ball or not and as far as parks and recreation, like the fall leagues of baseball and softball? Does anyone know?
Not going to, Tyler. Can't get employees.
We're, we're not gonna do the fall this year. They're really pushing to get fall league and try to get more, I guess it's a name and in past years, the turnout for fall baseball was not very good, so they decided not to have the fall baseball this year. As far as softball rules, I don't know, you can say about the softball program, but I do know the baseball program, I had a ball.
Okay, there's, there's been a lot of upset parents that were wanting to play fall ball, so I just wondered if we had enough to even have the league, because we have those parks and I hate to not use them if, if we have enough kids wanting to play because they're such pretty parks and that's why we built them.
Well, you're, you're exactly, exactly right and I said there, there's enough people that ought to be used.
I think you have a problem with employees because you got all school, school kids working there now.
Pretty much all the employees are in school. Of course, they, when they do, they just, they eat their time.
Jeremy, you've been involved with it for twenty years, you guys did.
Fall league, softball, ours particularly, we ran it up forward, people volunteered and so, and the boys is the issue and it also turned out, if you don't have enough kids for two teams, it's kinda hard to justify them there.
Turning the lights on and stuff.
Yep.
Maybe call Tammy Saltzman.
Okay.
Jessica, you got any other questions?
No, I think that's it.
Billy Dallas?
Yeah, no.
You sure? Lori, you got anything you wanna?
Nope, I'm good.
We've had a, we've been busy at City Hall.
We've had a day filled with meetings.
Yeah. Earlene?
No.
You sure?
Nope.
Did you want to comment about that KRS that Joe Whittle sent me? Is there a comment or anything we could say about that?
I, I don't have anything prepared.
Okay. David Riley?
I do. I have one thing I want to bring before the council. Last budget, they had approved, the council approved a data system for police records and stuff for forty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars with a annual maintenance of seventy-five, sixty. I've been working with that company and that company cannot provide to us exactly what we need for our records. They're not gonna save us any time or anything with our record keeping, so I've, I've been digging and it was actually put on the new budget, I think, was, wasn't it Lori, that put in a new budget?
Yes, we carried it over.
But what I found, I found two data systems that will work together. One of those systems is seventy-one hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-two cents and the other's data system is twenty-four thousand, forty-one dollars and eighty-six cents for a total of thirty-one thousand, one ninety-seven, forty-eight and the annual maintenance on both those systems roughly is about seven thousand dollars, about the same as the other system. So, actually, this is gonna be saving us, saving us roughly about eighteen thousand dollars and these two separate systems will cover everything we need covered. They will, they're compatible with everything we need.
Do you know of other departments using the same setup that what you're suggesting for us?
I do, I do.
Are they pleased with it? Are they pleased with?
Yes, very pleased. I've actually talked about three departments.
You know, technology changes so quickly. Things that we looked at two years ago for other departments in the computer line, when it came up this year, we found out some of that was not as good as what we had been given the impression of and I would just want to be sure we're gonna spend that kind of money. If we're budgeted for that and it's in the budget, you could spend that.
Yeah, this is, this is, like I say, this is about eighteen thousand dollars less.
Savings.
Than the original, original cost was and I think, I think Billy was actually on that committee for that when we discussed that and the reason even, we're even wanting to do this is our system over there is called ProCop and it's actually about, I know it's thirty years old because we've been utilizing it since I've been there.
I hate getting yearly annual maintenance fees. I like to just buy something and take it home and I hate to pay so many thousands, seven thousand dollars a year for a yearly maintenance fee.
I, I understand that and I agree with you, but a lot of this is backed up to the iCloud and that's where the cost is at and if we tried to store this kind of, kind of information here, the cost would be phenomenal. We couldn't afford it.
With those video cameras that officers are wearing, the storage of the, the videos is where they get you.
It is.
Yeah, it's very expensive.
Those cameras are not very expensive, but the storage.
The storage gets you, yeah. You know, that's, poor Google makes a lot of their money and Amazon as well, they're selling storage space to people, these departments and stuff.
So, I, I was just kinda wanting to run this by the council so you guys knew what was going on, see what your all's thoughts was and.
If you got it budgeted, David, and it's gonna save us eighteen grand, we're gonna be good with it.
And it, it's gonna serve the purpose. I mean, it's exactly what we need.
Okay. Is any, you got anything else, David?
No, sir, that's it.
Wes Shaw?
No.
You sure?
I'm good.
Y'all might notice the entrance on the left side going out is what the fire department has put in there and on the right side has got the history of the police department in there.
Hey, Mayor, hey, listen, it's coming. It'll be their next council.
It's gonna be.
Oh, oh!
I do have a question for Lori.
I'm sorry.
I read where we got our money.
Yes.
Have we got guidelines to use it?
They're vague.
They're vague, Billy.
So.
Eight hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, isn't that part of it?
Half of it.
That's half, yes, that's half. We'll get the other half about the same time next year.
Some of the things I read was infrastructure that you could.
They said specifically water, sewer and broadband internet.
Our city lake is very important to us and it's a backup water system for our fire department, so I don't know that we couldn't classify.
What could be done, Billy?
Leaving. I, I mean, you'd have to get somebody over, we, we tried to.
Can't the Corps of Engineers help us?
They didn't before.
I see.
And we had to go out, contract it, but Wesley was here, Wesley was here when, when we went over and they, they tried to repack it.
Yeah.
And, and they told us it'd be about ten years and I don't know how long it's been, but it's been about.
It's probably been that long.
But we're losing water and it's, it's not gonna be a pretty.
They specifically named water, sewer and broadband internet and so we had Comcast in earlier and they talked about the underserved areas within the city limits and there's quite a bit of, I've got the map with me and he, he's wanting part of that money to extend Comcast to those homes and, and it's a sharing. He said they might eat eighty percent of it, we paid the twenty percent of it, so they're gonna take the clusters of the underserved areas and brought us back, this cluster here that's got fifty homes in it would be this, this one here about, got seven homes in it would be as much, so we might decide, we may not decide to do any of it, but it would be a choice by cluster and that was one thing, but now that, I'm for the city lake repairs well.
But Billy, I'll do some checking and see, because I know there's another question I'm trying to get answered for Wesley too.
I mean, we, we can, you, I mean, we can show forth on utilizing it for other things other than just pleasure. I mean, we, I know we, we've, we've drawn a lot of water out of it, fire trucks refilling.
The Kentucky League, Lincoln Trail said they will work with us on this. The record keeping is, is tremendous. You gotta keep those records to the year twenty thirty-two. We got to have a plan for it by twenty twenty-three, wasn't it? Got to cap, spend it all by twenty twenty-three, but anyway, there's a lot of stipulations to it and Kentucky League, it's, Lincoln Trail has offered to help us with it for a half percent, but I don't know if we'll do that. Okay, Jeremy, did you want to say anything before the council? Fudgy?
No.
Terry?
No.
You sure? Karen? Ruby?
No.
Matt?
Mayor, I have one quick thing. Tammy Saltzman's watching and she said, she did say as far as the recreational programs that the high school and the middle school kids are playing sports, so it's been kinda difficult or will be kinda difficult to get players, but she said softball is up in the air at this moment, so on what they're gonna do.
Winners are kickball star, like, do you know, Jeremy?
No.
Gosh, I don't know. There's a, there's an application in there.
There's a brochure out, but I, I didn't read the date.
But I don't know what it is either.
Do you hear a motion adjourned?
Make a motion.[1774.51]